Ms. Hallam. Mr. Klein. Mr. Macy?
Here.
Ms. Nagarady Chackis? Mr. Paul Mary?
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina? Ms. Fritzieal?
Here.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
Mr. McAtena?
Here.
As long as we have nine others.
Okay, we'll begin with proclamations and statements. One, two, three, four, seven, dash, two, two.
A proclamation recognizing the 130th anniversary of the Battle of Homestead, sponsored by Councilmember Fritzieal and Klein.
Can I go ahead? Okay. So I'm very excited to be able to offer this proclamation recognizing the 130th anniversary of the Battle of Homestead. Whereas the Homestead steel strength, including the July 6, 1892 Battle of the historic Pump Halfing Mine Hall, is arguably the most famous and consequential struggle in American labor history. And whereas 3,000 workers working under a union contract from 1889 to 1892 helped build and then operate what was among the most productive and revolutionary steel mills in the world, combining both the Bessemer and open-heart technology. And whereas in Homestead, the town founded in 1881 to serve the needs of a rapidly expanding steel industry, several thousand townspeople and workers asserted a certain property right to their jobs and took up arms in defense of their employment. And whereas a force of 300 Pinkerton agents armed with Winchester repeating rifles hired by Henry Clay Frick to serve the property rights of Carnegie Steel failed in their attempt to land on the banks from Longahela and following a gun battle where seven workers and three Pinkerton agents were killed, they surrendered to union and town leaders and all workers.
So here are just a couple more "whereas's." Whereas under the union contract, workers had a strong voice on the job, negotiated share productivity and profit hours that were determined by work function and negotiation, Sundays and holidays off, as well as control over the political life of the town through free elections. And whereas, following the breaking of years, the lower half of the workforce worked from 72 to 84 hours a week with drastically reduced pay, a swing shift was also imposed that severed workers from the political life of the town, with many subjected to the brutal long term. A 24-hour shift every other week, time off for weekends and holidays virtually abolished. And whereas the 1892 Battle of Homestead established the dominance of the American system of employment at will, where both collective and individual rights of workers were completely subjugated to the will of corporate power and private ownership. No power to bargain, negotiate, or even speak until the United Steelworkers gained a contract 45 years later in 1937. Now that our group of people has resolved that we, Anita Fritzieal, Paul Klein, and all members of this council who hereby recognize July 6, 2022, as the 130th anniversary of the Battle of Homestead, and encourage citizens to discuss the importance of organized labor in reducing extreme economic inequality, to think about society's need for worker skills, intelligence, and participation to achieve sustainable and useful employment, and to understand the centrality of both free speech and concerted activity to rebuild productive and healthy communities. And witness whereof, I hereunto cause the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this 6th day of July 2022. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, council members, for the wonderful, and thank you, Paul and Anita, for the wonderful proclamation. I'm John Hare, I'm the president of the Board of the Battle of Homestead Foundation. In 1992, 100 years after the Battle of Homestead, our organization, the Battle of Homestead Foundation, began its activity. It's important to note that this activity started as the mills closed down and as hundreds and thousands of area workers went looking for work. And our organization has continued since then, and I'd like to briefly read our values. The dignity of work, labor's rich heritage and its pivotal place in our society; community engagement through programs and partnerships; skills development and prepared workforce for the future; human rights within a robust democracy. Our mission statement is, inspired by the dramatic labor conflict of 1892 Battle of Homestead, we promote a people's history, empower today's workforce, and build strategies for the future of work. Our vision is, we will celebrate working class culture, preserve labor's rich heritage, and shape the future of work. And thank you very much for this petition.
I would just like to add that in conjunction with government and business, labor is working to make a more perfect union, a more equitable society, a more fair society, where people can, through their labor with their hands, with their minds, their skills, with their talents, be able to earn sufficient earnings to sustain their families, raise their families, and be taxpayers of the county of Allegheny County, as well as all other jurisdictions, rather than tax consumers. And I would urge that we remember those who sacrificed in 1892 to put us on trajectory over the last century and 30 years, to build a strong middle class that does have an eight-hour workday, a 40-hour workweek, and into child labor, health and safety conditions, the right to an education, healthcare, and pensions, so that we can live in harmony with one another. And I offer solidarity to those workers in 1892, as well as today. Thank you very much.
We can do a picture? Picture? Jared, Councilman Macy wants to be at the top. Everyone's been there. Thank you very much.
We're also trying to knock on Julie Rabinowitz.
Yes.
Not to be overlooked.
The following proclamations that we write into the record, more specifically, four, eight, dash, two, two. Before proceeding, please, with the record in place, Ms. Stewart, Mr. Tullis, Ms. Hallam, Mr. Klein, Ms. Nagarady Chackis, and Mr. Paul Messina are all now present. Now, 15 members present. One, two, three, four, eight, dash, two, two. A proclamation honoring Father Miraslof Anthony Woach, his gift on the occasion of the 70th anniversary of Fritzieal, sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
One, two, three, four, nine, dash, two, two.
A proclamation commemorating the 70th anniversary of the TPC's Fritzieal plant, sponsored by Councilmember Tullis.
One, two, three, five, zero, dash, two, two.
A proclamation congratulating Nancy Hubley on her distinguished career at the Education Law Center in Wichita, the best in her retirement, sponsored by Councilmember Klein.
One, two, three, five, one, dash, two, two.
A proclamation commemorating the 50th wedding anniversary of James and Lorraine Caldwell, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary.
I will not have public comment on any of your jibbys.
We have many. First up is John Detweiler.
My name is John Detweiler, I'm at 5723 Solway Street in City Pittsburgh. I came tonight to support the passage of the Bill on Parks, number 1216222. But I wasn't going to speak because you've all heard all the reasons for passing this bill. I'm actually going to say with a little bit of my kind that I want to recognize Joni Rabinowitz. Because about eight years ago, Joni was one of the prime movers on the first, and as far as we know, the only time that a citizen's measure has ever been put on the agenda of this council, and it was on this subject, to preserve the parks. So Joni has come full circle to the night when a vote is going to be held on a measure that she worked on about eight years ago, and I'm so glad she's here. Thank you.
Next up is Zachary Barber.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Zach Barber, I'm a Clean Air Advocate of Penn Environment, I'm a resident of Allegheny County, living at 2233 Whitman Street, and since I last spoke to you, I unpacked it, which is really exciting. I'm here today to urge you all to vote favorably on the bill to protect Allegheny County parks from fracking. Now, as an environmental advocate, I have the great pleasure of talking to a lot of our neighbors about a lot of issues, and very few have ever gotten the response that this bill has gotten. Over the last few weeks, my colleagues and I have been out talking to residents of Allegheny County, and we've gotten many of the responses that you would expect, but I want to highlight two of the ones that I certainly didn't expect. One, I remember a mother pushing a stroller came up, and I said, "Would you like to help protect our parks?" And she said, "Oh, I like our parks, but I'm not very careful. What's the issue?" And I said, "Well, we want to stop fracking of our parks." And she said, "Well, what's fracking?" And I said, "Well, fracking is when you throw a forgets." And she said, "Well, you can't do that on a park. They're conserved, they're protected." And I said, "Well, no, actually, we are fracking a park right now, and we want to make sure it doesn't happen to the other ones." And she stopped and signed the petition signature, despite, quote, "not being very political." The second one was even more surprising. We were talking to a man who said he actually supports fracking, he drives a truck for fracking waste, and, you know, I thought this would be like the other conversations like this, we'd encourage him to have a nice day and end the interaction there, but he said, "I support fracking, but not in our parks. Those are special places." And I think that that shows the power of this issue to bring people together. It's not just crusty tree hunters like me, although certainly we do support this bill, but, you know, it makes common sense, right? No one has ever gone to North Park and kayaked and thought the experience would be made better by a convoy of diesel trucks or radioactive air pollution. Protecting these parks is a matter of politics, it is a matter of good policy, but even more, it's a matter of common sense. So that's why I'd be honored today to present more than 1,000 petition signatures collected over the last few months between Food and Water Watch and Penn Environment, urging you all to vote to support this bill. And I urge you all to do whatever it takes to get it over the finish line, including voting to override any veto that might come. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Next up is Robin Lesko.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Robin Lesko, I'm a resident of Allegheny County at 60 Academy Avenue, 15228. Thank you, Tom Stewart, representing my district. I would just like to echo what Zach said in the essence of time tonight. I also want to thank all the council members who have committed to voting yes to bill number 1216222 tonight, and for all the efforts of the co-sponsors, and also for the council members who are recognizing that even though they might have some hesitation with the legislation, that listening to your constituents is by far the greatest power, and to vote in their best interests to make sure that we are heard and appreciated as we support you. So thank you. Additionally, in addition to the 1,000 signatures that we are delivering tonight, we also had some personal letters that were signed for some of the county council district members, particularly District 2, Councilmember Filiaji. Please tell me I said your name right? Thank you. We wanted to welcome you and say thank you so much for taking an interest, and to also say that as a new council member, that I know that this legislation can be kind of tough to toil with, also because also fracking has helped some of our parks, but also some people are opposed. Just in the last, the last week, we've had over 100 personal letters that say, "Please support this legislation tonight. I'd love to give it to you, work in the legislature." And also, the petition signatures were also supported by a lot of local community groups, Communities First, Wickley Valley, that's in District 2, Protect Franklin Park, that's in District 2, also Pittsburgh DSA, Green Party, and the Sunrise Movement. Additionally, what I'll be having email in the effort to save some trees is we have a signed letter from elected officials from over 28 municipalities in Allegheny County saying, "Please vote yes tonight to bill 1216222. Thank you for all your efforts, thank you for all that you do, and we're proud to live in Allegheny County."
Next up is Brian Knuckles.
Hey, everyone, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name's Brian Knuckles, and I live in Wilkinsburg, District 10. I'm also rising in support for the fracking bill of 1216222. And I've noticed that during the public input process, which I've been very grateful to participate in, we've heard a lot from expert testimony and from community members about the specifics, why we need to ban fracking in public parks. Then I'd like to use my time to speak on some of the broader issues, the more general issues, where I think this bill is very important. To do this, I'd like to draw on my personal experience, working with folks who are going through mental health issues. Well, many of us who have challenges with mental health and have access to quality healthcare treatment, I mean, full recoveries and many happy memories that have long lives, there's way too many tragedies in our community. We lose hundreds and hundreds of people every year to suicide and accidental overdose. And when I talk to families of people who are lost, they're often bright lights in our community, and when I talk to their families, one of the most common patterns I see is, "We wish we could have done more and acted before the crisis." Unfortunately, we don't have any social supports for crisis, for before the crisis, excuse me, we have to wait till late, late in the problem, late in the game. And so, I think we need to shift from, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it" mentality when it comes to the public health and the climate. We cannot allow our climate to hit rock bottom. We are facing imminent, imminent issues and extinction risks and climate catastrophes. It's hard to face that kind of danger, because I think many of us, including myself, struggle with avoidance and denial, but this is something we have to face. We need leaders like you, who take strong political risks and think about, think about a horizon beyond our own ambitions, political ambitions, and even our own lifetimes. If you're one of those leaders, I'm asking you today to vote a yes on this bill, then I'd like to ask, you maybe spend some time over the summer and propose ambitious pro-environment legislation for your next session. Everyone on council has the leadership and experience to lead the fight against pro-extinction forces that are prioritizing ambition, profit, and short-term gratification over our security and health, and help us create a county that's an oasis and an example for the entire world. Thank you.
Next up is Dan Galvin of Public.
I'd like to thank everyone here for the time and the opportunity today. My name is Dan Galvin, I'm an Allegheny County resident, Iraq War veteran, active voter, and community member, and I'm here to speak in support of bill number 1216222, to ban fracking in Allegheny County parks. I grew up just outside another Pennsylvania steel town, that's on Pennsylvania, and much of my memories, my early childhood center on Struggling Street. I remember many times being hooked up to a nebulizer machine, they ate my constrictive lungs, the mask kind of strapped to my little face, my family waited to see whether it would alleviate the asthma attacks that defined much of my life. I remember them wearing that mask on the floor of the TV room, as well as in the backseat of the family car, hoping that the fresh air of a country drive might get kind of worse, as well as put us on the way to a hospital, which is a bad situation, I think. I remember quitting soccer mid-season, T-ball, unable to complete games due to lack of breathing, and at least one memory of being brought home from a walking park with gas in the air. As childhood wore on, I struggled to pierce and persevere through my asthma, in large part through involvement in organized swimming, specifically to increase my lung capacity. And fortunately, by high school, I had seemingly conquered my asthma, and was able to participate in sports like other kids, something I would have never thought possible in the days of being wet, gassing off the soccer field. By the time I joined the Army after high school, I was the picture of fitness, using my now-strength lungs to lead my fellow soldiers in morning exercise and marching cadence, and in that capacity and dedication to exercise was maintained during my deployment just outside the city of Bakuba during the Second of American War in Iraq. I remember waking every morning to the smell of burning kerosene and human waste, our unit's morning routine, and just one of the many environmental degredations of war. But despite these toxins, my breathing remained strong, and despite the dust and the smoke of war zone, my asthma never impacted me once during that time. It was not until I moved to Allegheny County that I began to once again experience the symptoms of asthma, and these past years, after three decades of respiratory health, I've once again had the experience of asthma attacks while running during days of poor air quality, which in this region is sadly often. If the air here in Allegheny County is toxic enough to impact me that way, after 30 years of freedom from asthma, I can only imagine the damage done to developing lungs and developing hearts and developing brains. The children of Allegheny County deserve clean air as they grow up. Incidentally, what brought me to live in the western half of Pennsylvania was my mother's diagnosis of cancer, and a sense of responsibility to care for her, she should be able to, to be unable to care for herself.
Could you wrap it up, please, with this answer, too?
Sure. When we enter a life of public service, we do so with the duty to protect. That's our job. And there's no duty more sacred than the duty to protect children. I implore you, do your jobs.
My name is Joy Bronstein, I am with Clean Water Action, I'm also a resident of Squirrel Hill in Allegheny County, and I thank you very much for having me here tonight. Most of what I have to say, you've heard me say, you've heard colleagues say, I just want to remind everybody tonight that you don't have to be against fracking entirely to be in support of this particular ordinance. There are other ways to get at the resources that some members of council want to make sure are able to be harvested in Allegheny County. Not that Clean Water Action is in support of fracking, we are not, but I hope that as you deliberate this and as you cast your vote tonight, that you think through what you're doing to preserve parks and what you're doing for and to and in support of the residents of Allegheny County. Thank you very much.
Next is Bob Nishakawa.
Passing.
The third.
Next up is Laurie Davidson.
Hi. So this is my first time ever doing this, I'm not a regular, and I have a great fear of public speaking, so I'm super nervous, but this is something I'm very passionate about, and I'm trying with difficulty to overcome those obstacles. In addition to those obstacles, I would like to point out that having the luxury of being here by 5:00 PM on a workday and dealing with parking and downtown traffic is a major obstacle. And so, as I'm speaking, I hope that you consider the fact that perhaps I represent many, many, many other people that are residents in Allegheny County that likely feel similarly. I can tell you that I'm an avid hiker in all of the Allegheny County parks, and I greatly appreciate them, and I have many, many fellow hikers that I know desperately want clean air. I also know many, many, many fellow hikers like me who have developed asthma, having never had it in my life in the past couple of years. I actually wanted to start out by thanking all of you for everything that you do for us in Allegheny County and your dedication to that, and also to everyone in this room for engaging in their government, that's not something to be taken for granted. There are many people, like Zach mentioned, that are completely unaware of this. I have the benefit of growing up with environmental education in public school as an adolescent growing up in Canada in Toronto, so I'm more tuned in to these things. I've been aware of the fracking issue for some time. I'm no longer hiking Deer Park, I haven't, ever since they started fracking there. I often hike along Rachel Carson, and I feel the toxic air that I'm breathing in on this trail, named after this amazing environmentalist, from all the gas lines and everything going along there. At one point, going up one particular hill that I need to train on, because I'm trying to get up Mount Whippy this summer, I stop and I gasp for breath because of the smells and the fumes of the gas. Oh, great. So I hope that you support this bill and vote yes for it, and please do right by the people of Allegheny County. I'm a public servant, and I work with children, as a speech pathologist, trying to teach them how to speak and breathe properly, and I would greatly appreciate your support of this bill. Thank you.
Tom Pike signed up for Klein, but provided written comments.
Hello again, my name is Tom Pike, I'm a resident of Duwitt Walhams District. By now, those of you who've heard me speak a few times have probably heard my story about Marie Vilgazwell catching on fire, and that was also in the op-ed that the post gets published, so I'm going to skip that today, I just wanted to talk about jobs. We have heard concerns from some council members about jobs, and I think jobs is a good thing to focus on. Should we be just shutting down some jobs without creating other jobs? And I think the answer is no, I think we need to be for workers. I think it's so great that this council passed a proclamation about the Homestead strike earlier today, and I wanted to draw your attention actually to another bill that is being considered by the council, which is 1218422. Among other things, this would see county buildings retrofitted, re-insulated, and green. That means jobs in HVAC, and those jobs would be local jobs. Unlike jobs in, say, fracking, or even, yes, solar installation, those jobs with installation, they tend to come in on trucks, and then they can leave on trucks, and they tend to leave a lasting impact on the community that they're a part of. But jobs in HVAC are not that way. Jobs in HVAC are local. Jobs in HVAC, we have dozens of HVAC contractors that do this kind of work, that could be hired to do this work for county buildings, that can train their employees on this kind of retrofitting, which is going to be the way of the future. So I would like to see not just this bill passed, I would like to see other bills pass with an eye towards the future of jobs in Allegheny County. And also, as I wrote in the op-ed, I'd like to see the council start to get creative after that. The council has a resource in CCAC. The CCAC, or CCAC has an HVAC program. Are there ways that we can take the HVAC program and encourage them to teach more about Zero Emissions HVAC? So, let's look at that. I encourage you to look beyond just at one specific bill and see how it fits into a broader picture of labor and work in Allegheny County, and thank you for your time.
Next up would be Bob Donovan, he also submitted written comments. Next up would be Dan Brisbeck.
Good evening, council. My name's Dan Brisbeck, and I live in Belfort Park.
Good evening, Council. My name is Dan Rysbeck and I live in Baffal Park. I'm here today to speak like everyone else in favor of ordinance number 212162-TAC22, which prohibits industrial or commercial land use within Allegheny County parks. During the public hearing on this item, I spoke of my perspective as a chemical engineer and someone who's studied the practice of hydroelectric fracturing and how fracking cannot be performed in a manner that does not endanger the environment and surrounding public. However, I understand that there may be some people on council who consider the deleterious impacts of fracking and think that's an acceptable price to pay for the jobs and economic prosperity that the practice of fracking allegedly brings. So I'd like to address this perceived benefit. A study by the Ohio River Valley Institute found between 2008 and 2019, the twenty-two counties that experienced significant fracking in Marcellus and Utica regions only saw job figures increase by about 1.6%. Nationally, jobs grew by 9.9% during that time period. These findings are consistent with a 2020 study from Penn State, which found that Pennsylvania's four districts experiencing fracking had lower per pupil revenues, income, wealth, and tax revenue than similar districts without fracking. This analysis came at a time when the region's natural gas industry was operating at full capacity. So it's really as positive a picture as could possibly be painted for the fracking industry. Given this information, it's no wonder that during the public hearing on this ordinance, roughly seventy people spoke out in favor of this ordinance and not a single person spoke out against it. I was once in a place where some of you were. I thought that fracking could be done in a manner that was safe. I thought that even if there were some negative health impacts, the jobs that they created would overwhelm these impacts, would be greater than them. That's why I got my minor in control engineering. That's why I majored in chemical engineering. But given the available information that we have for us, I think we have to come to the conclusion that this just isn't the case. And it's for that reason that I'm asking you to vote in favor of this ordinance. Since I do have about a minute left, I'd also like to express my support for ordinances 12355 and 12356. The decision of whether to receive an abortion should be made by the person that's pregnant, not by the state. Thank you.
Next up is Diane Peterson.
Good evening. I'm Diane Peterson from 125 Wichita, Allen, Allegheny County. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for listening to each of us. Your constituents, the votes you represent. I want to apologize to the members of council who have already heard my speech. I want to welcome the new faces. I've not seen before, somebody who might technically be new to you. I'm here to ask you to stand up and vote yes. Honoring your constituents, honoring their rights, I implore you to vote to protect and safeguard our public spaces. Vote yes on Bill 12162-22. True, we here tonight know what this bill is about. It's to protect our parks. But frankly, most people, most of your constituents, have not heard this is happening. I ask you to do your duty as a decent representative of the people, of the public. Do actions, pass legislation that protects people, the things that they love, the things they care about. Protect their air, protect their water, protect their public parks. Especially for those people whom I'm as lucky as myself or maybe you to have a front yard, have a backyard. These are their spaces to recreate. The purpose of our public parks is to recreate, to enjoy the health benefits of nature. These parks are for all of us. The purpose of our parks is not for industry. It is not to turn a profit. And note, this bill was very wisely written so that it does not stop commercial activity such as boating or other sports things or providing food. These are things that enhance the public environment of the park. But this bill is written in such a way to stop industry that may be harmful. So maybe or maybe you do not believe that fracking is harmful if you don't want to believe these 2,200 stories and citations. Okay. But I think we can all agree it doesn't belong under our parks and in our parks. Vote yes via the record to all of your constituents that you are protecting their parks. And if and when one person decides to veto you, vote yes again. Have the guts to speak for all of us, to speak for our health and our parks. You don't have to believe this. Read the bottom sentence, please. Do this for George Luca, who lost his life in this battle seven years ago. We've lost Deer Lake Park. There's fracking there. The water quality's gone down. People are still fishing and eating that fish. Yes, maybe we get a better parking lot. Yes, maybe we got a better playground. But at what cost? At what cost? Check out John Stoltz's information from Duquesne and see what has happened to the water quality and think of those citizens that do not know about that. And I'm still eating fish from there. It is not their job, it's your job to protect all of us. Thank you.
But Catherine Peterson, 125 Wichita Drive, 55th and 2nd. I also didn't quite know if I was going to be speaking. I didn't get a confirmation email. So sorry for the general vibe today. But just following up on my comments made at the hearing, I wanted to touch on a couple of things. First, I don't know if you all are familiar with the Ohio River Valley Institute. They do really important research on the economic impacts of the natural gas boom in Appalachia. Oh, hi, Ren. But if you've read the Appalachia report, I know there's been some talk around how drilling in the parks in Allegheny County has had an economic benefit. What hasn't been talked about is the general economic benefit or lack thereof of fracking across Appalachia. Their report looks at a number of counties across Ohio, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, which have been heavily fracked. Fortunately, Allegheny County was not one of those because we haven't been heavily fracked. But this does give us enough opportunity to learn from that data. If you look at that report, it documents that many Marcellus and Utica regions, fracking gas counties typically have lost both population and jobs from 2008 to 2019. heavily fracked counties show the most prosperity indicators. Also, the oil and gas sector had little to no impact on other sectors of the economy and they rely on out-of-state workers. So income generated from the fracking boom across Appalachia generally didn't enter the local economy and benefit local communities. Once again, I still look at Allegheny County because we're lucky we're not heavily fracked. That doesn't mean we shouldn't fight fracking in. This is a warning sign to keep cracking out because it hasn't benefited the local economy there. The second thing I want to quickly touch on is it's important to remember with natural gas boom in Pennsylvania, what happens in southwestern Pennsylvania and Allegheny County doesn't happen in a vacuum. If we increase fracking in Allegheny County, if we allow fracking underneath our county parks, we're going to see more radioactive fracking waste. Right now in Flum, they're trying to keep a radioactive fracking waste injection while out of that county. If we increase fracking here, it's going to mean more radioactive fracking in our county. It's going to mean, again, we've seen the Falcon ethane pipeline in Allegheny County. It's going to be more dangerous ethane pipelines, more dangerous natural gas pipelines. We don't need to create more need for this infrastructure and more place for this radioactive waste to go. The final point, I don't know if folks have mentioned this, but if you're thinking about voting yes to align yourself with Fitzgerald, that's a joke. I think everyone in this room and so many people across Allegheny County hate Richard Fitzgerald. It is so well-known. That man is so unpopular. He is almost at the end of his term. If you think voting yes is going to help you politically, all it's going to do is make you look like a fool because everyone hates him. It's not just environmentalists. It's not just the people who hate the Allegheny County jail board. It is across the board. People know that he is sleazy. And voting no on this to align yourself with him is not going to help you in the long run because he's going to leave and what's going to stay is your record and the people who hate him, the people who know that he's let Allegheny County down time and time again. This is your chance to be brave. Stand up for Fitzgerald and stand up for our parks and our communities. Thank you so much. Sorry again for your incredibly proud of.
Next up is Jennifer Brown. Next up would be Loretta Weir. Followed by Kenneth Weir. The last two individuals who signed up for agenda topics are Michael Dietrich, who also submitted written comments, and Laura Lovett, who also submitted written comments.
Okay, moving right along. Approval of minutes, 12352-22.
A motion for a amendment to the April 26, 2022 regular meeting of council.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Here we go. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 12353-22.
A motion for a amendment to the April 26, 2022 regular meeting of council.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Carry or no discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Any presentation of appointments?
No.
Unfinished business for the committee on appointment review for the second reading. At this time, I'd like to have the clerk read all of the appointments as a group. And all of these appointments are now re-referred to the special committee on IPRB applicants for additional consideration.
Number 12237-22 approving the appointment of Lynn Banazak to the Independent Police Review Board sponsored by Councilmember Bennett. 12240-22 approving the appointment of Richard Garland to the Independent Police Review Board sponsored by Councilmember Bennett. 12242-22 approving the appointment of David Marinick to the Independent Police Review Board sponsored by Councilmember Walton. 12244-22 approving the appointment of Keith Murphy to the Independent Police Review Board sponsored by Councilmember Walton. 12272-22 approving the appointment of Chloe Purdon-Mill to the Independent Police Review Board sponsored by Councilmember Bennett. And 12274-22 approving the appointment of Justin Levitt-Pearle to the Independent Police Review Board sponsored by Councilmember Bennett.
Okay, we'll now have Committee on Government Reform for the second reading, 12163-22.
An ordinance amending the Ministry of Code of Allegheny County, Section 5-801.05 entitled Public Hearing in order to establish a uniform mechanism for fostering transparency regarding county salary budgeting sponsored by Councilmembers Katina and Howell.
Thank you. Councilman Howell?
Thank you, President Katina. The Committee on Government Reform met on June 30th and affirmatively recommended this ordinance. So I would like to make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made in second. Discussion?
Councilman Klein? Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to share some concerns that I have voiced, expressed with respect to this ordinance at a couple of the preceding committee meetings. I've asked the Chair of Government Reform Committee that what it is exactly that we're trying to accomplish in enacting this ordinance. I have been told preliminarily that this is just information. We can't do anything with this information, but it's good to have information. At a previous meeting of the Government Reform Committee, one of our colleagues, Mr. Artis Eddy, has pointed out that the information that's being sought by this ordinance is already available to all of us as a council and available and accessible to the public as well. As the effort to convince us of the need for the ordinance has evolved, we have been told that we need the information in order to fulfill in an informed way our responsibility to pass the county budget. I agree with that assessment. We should have all the information necessary to make an informed decision on the budget. But right now, without this ordinance, we can make an informed decision. We can make an informed decision as a council by exercising the authority that we already have. We have in place a committee on budget and finance. We have a very able committee chair. That committee, that committee can reach across the hall and ask the administration to provide additional information to clarify and to explain. We ask. In the lead-up to considering the budget, the committee can meet and review the current budget and bring that understanding to the work to be done considering the proposed budget for the next year. The committee can conduct meetings with key players across the hall. They can ask questions. They can request documentation. We have the capacity right now to do that. It just requires the will to do so. Look, an ordinance should not be a substitute for action. To enact an ordinance for the purpose of obtaining information that we already have is to trivialize the purpose of the import of an ordinance. And I would also suggest that with respect to this process of considering this particular ordinance, I don't think that it's helpful or productive to characterize those who have concerns with this ordinance as lacking a commitment to transparency or as being satisfied to make decisions without information. There's really something disingenuous about that. These shaming tactics are usually not productive. They don't work very well. And they really undermine the legitimacy of what you might be trying to achieve in the end because the motion, not reason, carried the day. So as a result, I will be a no on this proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else with a... Councilman Lamarcus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Anybody that regularly attends the Compliment Interventions will recognize that in most cases, Councilman Klein and myself are usually diametrically opposed anyway. But I couldn't agree more with his statement here and how he captured what took place during the committee process. This information is already publicly available. You know, the Pittsburgh Business Times publishes a list, you know, of the highest paid county employees in the nation. I find it unnecessary if someone's going to advocate consistently on behalf of limited goner, I'm against passing laws just for the sake of passing laws, you know, when this is already available. And I too, you know, object to the characterization that if we don't support something, automatically our voters are questioned. It's claimed that we don't care about transparency or we don't care about doing our jobs. So I too will be no on this tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else with a statement? Councilman Kowski?
I just want to concur with Councilman Klein's comments about that it is not helpful when members of council declare that others have acted in bad faith or with a lack of transparency. I do believe that Councilman Klein is absolutely correct that those types of tactics do in the end tend to backfire and are not productive and not conducive to civility within county council.
Thank you. Councilman, do you want to join your panel sponsor?
I did. President Katina, prior to these bills being sent back to committee for the second time, I had sent you an email expressing some of my concerns with them. It's the prime sponsor of both bills, both this and 1218-22. My biggest concern for both of these is I have a deep fear of the politicization by hiring of county department heads or salaries in county committees. I work in a field, I work in campaigns for a living. I work in a field where it's incredibly hard to keep folks engaged in that field for a long period of time. And public service and serving in government is just as hard, if not harder, to keep folks in there for a long period of time as well. And I believe if we're plastering, which is already available as been said, but if we're making a massive deal out of individual salaries who are dedicated public servants, not elected officials and employees in the county, we will see a talent drain at this institution, not for this administration, but for the next one. And I'm worried about the type, I'm worried about the loss of talent given what I've seen that as a campaign staffer. And the same thing for the, for the other bill when it comes to the hiring and the process of the admissions, the department heads. So, you know, respectfully, President Katina, I laid out those concerns in an email and I respect your desire to continue to work through some of these things in committee. Again, given that council members have concerns. I didn't want to say that. I appreciated you doing that. But further committee meetings did not resolve my issues with these two bills. So I was still leaning on them tonight, but I appreciate the work that you and the other sponsors had put in with them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman People?
Thank you. I too don't agree with this ordinance for specific reasons. Specifically, the fact that we're asking every director of every department to give us the actual salaries of 7,000 employees of this county. Now, I know by special request or right-to-know request, anybody in the public could find out what people make and so can we. We don't have to follow a right-to-know request. All we have to do is... We don't have to follow a right-to-know request. All we have to do is ask. But let's assume somebody in one of these departments, out of the seven thousand people, shows forty thousand dollars. How do I know to justify that his job is either underpaid or overpaid? Should I review all seven thousand employees of this county? That's the director's jobs and the county manager and the administration, not mine or this, this council. I, I think that, I understand that transparency is great, but I, I just don't feel the right to make this an ordinance to the fact that if I really want to know, I'll ask. And if I want to know, I think I will be told. So at this point, I really don't believe that I want to pass this ordinance, because there's going to be seven thousand employees in this county going to be pretty upset when we pass this ordinance that says, we want to see what you're making. It'll be really interesting to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a statement? Councilman Paul?
Thank you, President Katina. So I just want to speak to a couple things, because I just want to like break down what this bill is, because it still seems that after four committee meetings, after going on six months now, so many folks here and maybe in the public don't understand what this bill is. All this bill does is says that each year, when we as a council vote on one billion dollars of taxpayer dollars, that we should have the information about what we're voting on when we take that vote. That's all this is. It isn't about changing salaries. It isn't about saying that I don't think that someone deserves to make this, that someone deserves to make more. That is not what the language of the bill says. The language of the bill allows us to do our jobs, and I appreciate that some of my colleagues seem to have relationships with an administration that willingly gives them information. I'm so glad that you all have that. But there are other members of this council who do not, and who continuously get denied access to information. Yes, salary information is public after the budget is passed. How can we possibly make an informed decision without information? If you don't want this information, then don't read it when you get it. But do not tie the hands of this council and future councils from being able to make informed decisions, the jobs that we were elected to do. You keep hearing that over and over again tonight about not even this bill, but other bills. Do our jobs. That's all it takes. If you don't want the information, that doesn't mean you have to vote no. Just don't look at it when you get it. The row offices already provide us this information. We get salary information from the district attorney's office, from the treasurer's office, from the comptroller's office, from the sheriff's office. Why doesn't the administration give us these numbers? Tell me that. This is not a dig at the current administration. The current administration is term limited, and a new county executive, a new administration will be coming now. Take this vote for them. Let's make sure that we are able to do our jobs, and the only way we can do that is that we all have equal access, as equal members of council, to this important information, so that we can make a decision. Well, it is about transparency, regardless of if you want to say that or not. It is about good government, which I thought we were all on the same side of. This is a good government bill. And when we talk about the workers of Allegheny County, will they be mad if we pass this bill? The only workers that I've talked to about this bill are the ones who are furious that they feel the county has not been operating in good faith in negotiating their union contracts, because they have to find out on the news that while they're being told that they can't get measly raises. The inner circle of the county executive is getting tens of thousands of dollars of raises in one year with no job position change. Please explain that to me, because if you vote no on this, you're going back to all of those workers, all those folks who are busting their bucks for us day in and day out as county employees, who are negotiating in good faith with an administration in their collective bargaining agreements, and being lied to and saying we don't have money, when really it's just they don't have money for them. There's plenty of money to go around. Where are they going to give it to? It is up to us to do our job to be the checks and balances that the legislative branch is supposed to be. How can we do that without having all the information required to do our jobs? I'll be voting yes on this, and I would understand why anyone wouldn't.
Mr. President, I would just like to point out that I'm glad that my colleague in the last portion of that statement, it finally came out what this was all about. It's not about good government. It's not about transparency. It's not about anything other. She's angry that the administration provided raises to some of their folks and is trying to take and pit the administration versus our workers and some of the union contractors. Others happy that this is probably out of consent. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilman Walton?
Again, in the collective bargaining process, I'm, I'm not sure, but I'm fairly certain that the administration, in none of its recent rounds of negotiation, has taken the position that there was not revenue available. And so if you, if you have, if you have documentation to demonstrate that, Councilwoman Howell, Councilwoman Norman Howell, I'd like to see. So, but nonetheless, but nonetheless, I believe that this is as part of an ongoing effort. An ongoing effort, an ongoing effort to try to embarrass and isolate the administration. And as a result, I don't think that this legislation generates the kinds of activity that is needed. And as a result, our vote no. But nonetheless, unless there's a, a serious position by other members of council, either of us can go ahead and move to the vote.
Hold on. I didn't get a chance to comment. I have to be last, so I'm going to. I'm not about, I, I understand everyone's concerns here tonight. But the problem with everything I'm hearing tonight is that this is all presented to us in advance. We find out about things after the fact. We pass a budget basically blindly, without all of the information given to us. We get blindsided sometimes. It happens. What my intent of this bill was, when I have taxpayers coming up to me and saying, why did this person get a forty or fifty percent increase, and I know nothing about it? And they tell me, well, you voted for it. Well, yeah, I did vote for it, and I didn't know that was in the budget, and that's my, as Marty Griffin called me out for the other night, or the other day, yeah, that's my mistake, and I won't be doing it again. So I'm telling you, tonight, everyone can vote however they want to vote. But I'm requesting this information tonight. The request goes into every, all county entities. If this doesn't pass, I want this information, or my vote will be a no on the county budget moving forwards, because I'm not voting blindly on any other county budgets moving forwards. Because that's not what we need to do. We need to be fully informed, and we need to have a responsibility to the taxpayers in Allegheny County. And if we can't do that in good conscience, we shouldn't be up here sitting. So thank you. At this point, Councilman Walton, you make the motion.
I second.
Go ahead.
On a motion approved. Mr. Bennett, I called him.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
No.
Mr. Dewar?
No.
Mr. Liagi?
No.
Mr. Chetolas?
No.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Mr. Macy?
No.
Ms. Zachary Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
No.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Mr. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
No.
President Katina?
Yes.
I seven, no eight, the bill failed.
Committee on Government Reform for the Second Reading, one, two, one, six, three, dash two-two.
I voted that was one, two, one.
I'm sorry, even, one, two, two, oh, eight, dash two-two.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny County of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, Part Four, entitled Executive Branch, Article four, zero, one, section five, dash four, zero, one, point, zero, nine, entitled Staff Organization Appointments, in order to implement a unified structure governing the appointment of departmental directors in equivalent positions sponsored by councilmembers Katina, Bennett, and Howell.
Councilwoman Howell?
Thank you, President Katina. On June thirtieth, the Committee on Government Reform met and amended the original bill and then voted to approve the amended version that changes the confirmation period from a hundred and eighty days to forty-five days. So we affirmatively recommended it, so I would like to go with the will of the committee and motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion has been made in second. Discussion? Councilman DiMarco?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you very much for recognizing me. As I stated at the meetings, my opposition to this bill is that in a future county executive, the county council would have the due faculty ability to be able to kneecap any type of incoming administration by withholding approval of that county executive's pick for directors and things of that nature. It's a minority party here. Allegheny County has had three county executives in the twenty-two years that we've been on board. The first one was Republican Jim Ross. We have a term limited executive who's up after two thousand twenty-three. If a Republican were to be elected county executive here, the county council would have the ability, by withholding approval for the directors, to kneecap an incoming administration, and let them be able to execute their role and their job in managing the executive branch. I don't believe that we should have that power. We are equal. You know, branch is here, this is part of what our core mission is, and I believe that an incoming executive should have the ability to hire his team to get the job that he's been elected to do done, for that I'm going to be a no on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Ending our session statement. Councilwoman Howell?
Yeah, again, just want to make sure there's no confusion about this vote and what we're voting on, because it, again, seems that there must be. But this is simply another way for us to provide checks and balances to the executive branch. The President of the United States has to give his appointments confirmed by his legislative body. The city of Pittsburgh, the mayor of Pittsburgh, by his legislative body. Why should Allegheny County Council be any different? We address the concern of the kneecapping of any county executives by making sure that everybody's sitting on wait periods, that someone was going to have to wait from the time their name was put forward to the time they actually heard about the position. We've addressed the concerns over four separate committee meetings now about this bill. Again, this is a simple thing that every other functioning legislative body does. There is absolutely no reason for us to be exempt from the standard that other legislative bodies, including our own United States Congress and our next-door neighbor's city council, both do. I do not see any argument against this, and that's all.
Mr. President? If I may, if I'd like to remind my colleague here, what the United States Congress, the United States Senate approves are members of the cabinet and the federal agencies. They need not approve the actual hiring of the employees for the bureaucrats that are in there. All the appointments that the county executive makes today are approved through the Appointment Review Committee and then do come before council, and we vote for them, okay? But for him to have to, have to take and get approval on the people that work in a particular department so that they can manage public work for something else, that goes far outside that. So I would just differ a little bit with your contention as to what happens in Congress or in city council. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Yes, I would just like to point out that I personally believe that the directors of the various departments of Allegheny County are similar to a president's cabinet. Yes, we currently already have authority. I'm so glad that my colleague pointed that out. We already have authority to approve hundreds, if not over a thousand, different appointments to boards and authorities and other appointed bodies throughout the county. We already have that. Why should we stop short of the heads of the department being paid with taxpayer dollars, which, again, are up to us to oversee, are up to us to vote on? That's our job. We should not kneecap this council by saying that we should have no say, regardless of it's a minority county executive or a county executive who has a legislative body in its majority. That should not matter here. What we're saying is that we're trying to make sure the county council is done finding about stuff, stuff out on the news. I am so sick of finding out about what's going on in this county on the evening news, when I want fifteen members elected to this legislative body. Aren't you all sick of that? This ensures that we won't hear that we have a new department head from an evening news broadcast, from a post on the county's Facebook, that we will get to meet and discuss qualifications, personality, job intents, with the people who are going to be appointed to these important taxpayer-funded roles. I think that's our job.
Mr. President? Yes. This was just a few short months ago, where this board voted down a number of appointments that had been made, and would may return for political reasons, okay?
Excuse me, President Katina, I believe it's against Robert's rules to appugn the motives of your fellow colleagues, but... I believe it's actually an amendment to the code. Yeah, so I just, I would just like to have a little.
I think you might want to ask, you might want to ask the person taking the transcription what I just said. I said would may return as political purposes or reasons. So that, to me, is an indication and justification of how these types of things can be made, can become political, and therefore I will be a no on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Paul?
Well, if we consider this, if we consider this from an institutional perspective, and separate the personalities out of this, I mean, the reality is that certainly there are political considerations that will often weigh heavily in this process, even where you have an executive of the same party, he might find that not needs to, you know, this kind of position. Might be voted down for good reasons and sometimes reasons that are otherwise. But if we consider this from an institutional perspective, this would seem to be fundamental to the legislative creation and oversight responsibilities. So I would certainly say and echo this with respect to the county executive appoints vending people to boards, authorities, agencies, you know, every year, and that is something that, you know, council signs off on. So from my vantage point, I have no problem granting council what is, in my, my view, the advice and consent power of such bodies. And I know that, you know, we've tried to liken it in some way to what goes on in Washington at the federal level, but I think that, again, we're talking about, we're not talking about thousands of employees, and we're looking ahead in the future, and in doing that, I think that we ought to, as a council, again, as a part of our oversight responsibilities, we ought to have a voice in who is nominated to serve in those leadership roles.
Mr. President? Hold on, Councilman, Councilman DePaulson's next.
No less questions, but the bottom line is, when a chief executive hires directors or members of his administration, I have reason to believe that that comes under day-to-day operations. And that may be in violation of the Home Rule Charter or something like this, because we have no authority over that, and now that's in question. That's, maybe somebody can answer that question in our staff or solicitor. But I can argue the fact that this comes under day-to-day operations.
Setting aside all the other comments that, there is a question. I would assume, well, the county council can amend the Administrative Code, if our question. And obviously, you know the procedure, if you're going to change the Home Rule Charter, you can't do that. So that, that could be a question raised by the administration on the passage of this type of bill. I'm not saying it's correct under the same, that could be a question. I agree with you, saying it could be a question.
Yeah, that's, I would say it's in question. That's why I'm going to be a no for this.
Councilman DiMarco?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you again. And the last point here, I think echoes a little bit of what you're saying. The authority for council to approve appointments, that is vested to us under the Home Rule Charter. The authority for the executive and the manager to hire staff, that's also vested to them in the Home Rule Charter. And that's not subject to order of change. So, you know, to me, again, you know, I'm not against this for a reason that I say it, but I believe it's against law. The law is law. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Anyone else with a statement? On your motion? Motion has been made in second. Go ahead.
On a motion approved. Ms. Bennet?
Wait, come back.
Who's that?
She's going to vote. That's up to the body, not me. Okay. Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
No.
Mr. Dewar?
No.
Mr. Liagi?
No.
Mr. Chetolas?
No.
Ms. Howell?
I'm going to vote yes. I'm just trying to stall a little bit, so.
No.
Thank you. Mr. Palmasana?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
I need to write now about...
President Tina?
Councilmember is on her way. Yes.
Yes. Eyes eight, note seven, the bill passes.
Committee on Health and Dune Services, second reading, 12320-22.
An ordinance to counsel the county of Allegheny ratifying amendments 35, Section 2105.13, gasoline loading facilities, and Section 2105.14, gasoline dispensing facilities, stage two controls of the Allegheny County Health Department rules and regulations, Article 21, air pollution control, sponsored by the Chief Executive. Counselor Klein?
Yes, and it's, and it's commending on 628, the committee on Health and Dune Services, affirmatively approved, recommended, and here for council today with the firm recommendation.
Second. Motion has remained in second. Any discussion? No, no discussion, direct big take a vote call over. Our motion approved. Ms. Bennet?
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Duer?
Yes.
Ms. Leaji?
Yes.
Mr. Fultus?
Yep.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Chappies?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Palmasana?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Tina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, note zero, the bill passes.
Committee on Sustainability Initiative, the second reading, 12162-22.
An ordinance, the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Allegheny County Code of Organizations, Chapter 6, entitled Parks and Recreation, through the decree of the new Subchapter 680, entitled certain agreements prohibited in order to delete and sale and/or any other agreements that would permit or otherwise facilitate private and/or public entities engaging in any industrial or commercial land uses within Allegheny County parks, sponsored by councilmembers Allen, Pritzio, Bennet, Bekowski, and Zachary. Counselor Pritzia?
Thank you very much, President Katina. On 6322, the Committee on Sustainability Initiative met, and in consideration of the unanimous committee that firmly recommended this, I move this ordinance to a vote.
Go back, guys.
Motion has remained in second. Discussion, who wants to, who wants to kick it off? Counselor, if you thought...
I may be more qualified, and I'll tell you why. Back in 2014, John Paul Mary, Bob Macy, and myself were the only people on this council when we started to discuss the Deer Lakes project for the Marcella Shell.
We remember.
But let me be very clear, I am not in favor of drilling in a park on a well pad, okay? Let's be very clear about that. I know that the Marcella Shell industry can be dangerous, I'm very aware of that, nothing's safe, it's an industry, so are the steel mills. But back in 2014, Range Resources approached us because a man by the name of Ken Gulick owned a 200 acre farm across the street from the park, and everybody in Deer Lakes that was within a shot of that Marcella Shell signed a lease to receive royalties. They came to Allegheny County Council to review it. We spent months. We went to Deer Lakes Park, we went to Mr. Gulick's farm, we went to Washington County to see what they were doing with their Marcellas. We went to the high school and talked to the people in Deer Lakes. We did everything we could to diligence, we held the longest committee meeting in the history of this council and started at four o'clock and went till 12:30 a.m. with Range Resources. During that time, the President, Vice President of Range Resources told us that he was going to get in trouble for what he's going to say to us, but what he said was, "We don't give a damn whether you sign this lease or not." That's exactly what he said to us. "We're going around you, we're going on both sides of your park, and we're going to frack whether you sign this lease or not. You're not going to stop us." But here's what happened, even our chief executive stood at this podium two weeks ago and told you that by us signing that lease, we increased the safety of the people in that area with water pollution, sound pollution, all of it, you name it. We restricted the traffic, we restricted the sound, the light pollution, we made sure that these poor people in this area that only signed a lease for 12 and a half percent of their, of their leases, their royalties, were going to get that, and they said nothing about safety, nothing. So what had happened, it passed, and this county received $8 million just to sign the lease. Since 2014, this county basically hit the powderball with the Marcella Shell. Between the county airports and the Marcella Shell at the Deer Lakes, to date, this county has received $73 million in royalties to date. We were responsible when we voted for the Marcella Shell royalties beneath the park, not on the park. I wanted nothing to do with a well pad in the park, and I still don't today at any other park. I'll be clear about that, but if some place like Round Hill or another park where the Marcella Shell is prevalent, is, is active, if everybody signs a lease around that park and we don't, we've got nothing to say about the safety of what's going on there. We have nothing to say, but by signing a lease for the sub-surface, we do have something to say. So the bottom line is, we improved the environment during that time. I see people shaking their heads no, but that's, that's a fact. We improved it. So I just want everybody to realize that every case, we're not city council. They voted not to frack in the city of Pittsburgh because guess what? There's no place to frack in the city of Pittsburgh. That's why they voted for it. This is a county. We've got many rural areas with farmlands and, and, and the Marcella Shell is, industry is here. We're not going to get rid of them, we're not going to stop them, but why would we not consider a sub-surface lease if one were to come close enough to us to receive the royalties? That doesn't make sense. I'm a businessman, and I understand the fact that us as county council, our mission is to hold the price on taxes, and it's to make money for this county, that's our jobs, whether we like it or not. So the bottom line is this, this ordinance does nothing to help the environment because we say no, we don't want nothing to do with it, we have no say-so on the private owners of these properties that are fracking. We have nothing to say to them because we can't. But if we join in, now we got to say so. Keep that in mind, folks. Thank you.
Counselor Fullop, Counselor Lafferty.
Thank you very much, President Katina. I'm speaking to the stakeholders of Allegheny County, numerous, the numerous residents and non-residents who have sent emails to me and council, all who enjoy Allegheny County parks, my teenage children who grumble when I get them up early to paddleboard at the North Park Lake, but cannot wait to go back when we're done, my 80-year-old mother who continuously reminds me that she was one of Hot Harry's North Park runners in the 1980s, District Two residents, President Katina, fellow members of council, and the executive and administration. How have I made my way to my decision today? I was installed on county council in April 12th of 2022, and since then, I'm sure if anybody listens, has, knows that I have made every effort to hit the ground running and quickly get up to speed on all of the issues. I've attended almost 30 meetings, many of those lasting several hours, and some very eventful, as I'm told. I listened and read and I asked questions, I listened again and I read again, and I spoke with a lot of people. I believe that no one wants to drill in the surface, just like Mr. Fultus, Councilmember Fultus said, no one wants to drill in the surface of our beautiful parks. We all should want our parks to be safe havens for residents now and in the future. That being said, I have serious concerns about the drafted language of the ordinance itself, and I do not believe that blanket ban should stand in this case. First, I have no doubt that this bill will not ultimately achieve the preservation goals that it is intended to set. I do believe that the intention of the framers of this ordinance was in the right spirit of preservation, but the language used was most likely not looked at by a trial attorney with an eye towards unintended consequences and collateral damage. As a former letter payer with almost 20 years of experience, who now can't even speak because I'm very nervous, the most troubling aspect and about the vagueness of this ordinance is the prohibition and exceptions clause, which would, quote, prohibit the county from entering into leases and other agreements that would permit or otherwise facilitate private and/or public entities to engage in any industrial or commercial land uses. This would put nearly 60 public-private partnerships currently operating in our parks at risk and most certainly discourage any future beneficial endeavors at park enhancements. I have a list here of almost 60 park leases that we currently have that would, could become in jeopardy if this ban, blanket ban, were to be approved. In Voice Park, we have Pittsburgh Police athletically, they rent the house for boxing activities. In Voice Park, we have Family Links, they rent and help manage a center for at-risk youth and families. Also in Voice, we have American Snow Solutions, which is the ski slope operators. In Deer Lakes, we have the Amateur Astronomers Association, they rent and manage the Wagnon Observatory. In Hartwood Acres, at risk would be the family polo house match. In Harrison Hills, the Highlands Area Soccer. In North Park, we have Venture Outdoors, which we use frequently, the North Allegheny Soccer Club, the Snow Cone Machine, over-the-bar restaurant, the North Hills Council of Government leases part, North Park as a leave composite site for 19 communities in the North Hills. LL Bean would be at risk, Go Ape Zip Line, this is all in North Park. In South Park, we have Hundred Acres Manor, we have the South Park Senior Softball Association, we have the Mon Valley Express Drum and Bugle Corps, we have the South Park BMX track. In White Oak, we have the No Kill Animal Shelter, and in multiple parks, we have First Tea of Pittsburgh, we have, and the Rachel Carson Trail Conservancy. These are our current leases, all that would be vulnerable to an adverse reading of this ordinance. Some appoint me to this section that asserts that prohibited activities do not necessarily include these commercial partnerships because they are associated with the public's recreational use and enjoyment of the parks. Who says so? That's what is subject to interpretation. During talking to people about this ordinance, I've also discovered in my own parks, there are people who don't want lights, there are people who would be glad to see over the bar removed, and would gladly file suit to have some of these existing and future endeavors removed. That cannot stand, in my opinion, in this bill. A serious read of the language makes all partnerships vulnerable in that they must, me, they, the businesses, and even the county must now defend or prove that their use is directly associated with the public's recreational use and enjoyment. This ordinance could actually discourage growth in positive ways, and that is what the opposite, that is the opposite of what I think all of you people want. Further, as Mr. Fultus had said, this ordinance, and let me be clear, this ordinance does not bind this or any other council from reversing their decision and voting differently. The only solution here is something that's permanent, and that would be a referendum, but that takes time and that takes cooperation. While there are no, I've been assured there are no pending permits to extract, now is the time for collaboration. At this time, I urge county council, the executive and the executive branch to work together to organize a countywide sustainability initiative to shore up the future of the parks and the county as a whole, to develop a comprehensive plan, something that I think Mr. Shields referred to as the action plan. Let's do that. Not this countywide ban, a comprehensive plan by pooling resources together, scientists, lawyers, stakeholders, and industry leaders to guide us and create an effective, permanent policy with standards from which we can make a sound and informed decision on fracking and other issues. The Board of Health sets standards in Allegheny County all the time, food safety standards, air quality standards, and many other health-related matters. Why not standards in this case where we can ensure that no unwanted and harmful activities occur in our parks? I will respectfully vote no because this ban, this bill, is vague and does not go far enough, and it is a detriment to existing and future public-private partnerships. I appreciate the passion and the laser focus that all of you in this room have, and I appreciate what your signs are telling me to do. But again, let me be clear, I'm an out-of-parkgoer and I don't want drilling in the park, but my job, as I see it, is to see the big picture, and this bill as drafted does not work as intended, I will vote no. Thank you, President Katina.
Counselor Hall.
Mr. President, I should say, we hear all the votes have come before us, not this evening, but in previous meetings, we believe that fracking is bad, and we all agree that we should not be fracking in our parks, okay? But I share the same concerns that Counselor Lafferty has in regards to the vagueness of the language and how it could affect leases that we currently have out there. You know, I think if you're going to take and do this, we should do something that would restrict what we're trying to take in address and not be overly broad. The second thing, concern I have, is that regardless, the county executive could not go and sign a lease today without our approval. One of the few things that has a few powers the county council has is to oversee real estate. So we, for any proposed lease, and there isn't one that I'm aware of currently, it would have to come before us for approval. So, you know, I, in my personal opinion, is that I believe that because it is one of the core powers that we hold, as well as the ability to pass legislation, levy taxes and fees, things of that nature, that we should be looking at all potential partnerships or transactions on a one-off basis, looking at them individually and making the best decisions for the people of Allegheny County. And for that reason, I will be no on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Duer?
Mine, very quick. So I just wanted to thank the residents of District Five who had reached out to me during this process on this bill. I have tried very hard to email back all, if I missed one, let me know. During the committee process, I had, you know, brought some concerns about the bill's effectiveness. Those still stand. I will vote yes, don't worry. I'm voting yes, but I think it's my duty as a council member to bring those concerns up during the process of, as I have done at the end of the day, to listen to my constituents who have told me to vote in favor of this. So if you haven't seen my statement, it's on my social media, but I also have been emailing out to the folks who have reached out to me, and if I might have missed some of you, because there was, you know, about 15 folks from my district who had emailed me directly, some might have gone to the county council email at large, and I had emailed all the people who had signed up for the public forum. If I missed some, let me know, be happy to sit down if you can talk about that statement or anything, but I will be voting yes, I assume after that, you probably don't care. So, but I appreciate the, I appreciate the dialogue that I had with my constituents about this issue and the vigor in which quite a few of them have talked to me about this, and I even got stopped, I was at the mall, South River Mall, and I, I had someone who actually came to a public forum days later, stopped me as I was eating, and he was like, "How are you voting on, on fracking bill?" And I said, "Do you have 45 minutes I want to talk to you about?" And he was like, "Are you kidding me?" And I sat him down in South River Mall and talked for like one hour on this bill. That I had with my constituents about this issue and the vigor which quite a few of them have, um, talked to me about this. And I even got stopped, uh, I was at the mall, South District Mall and I, I had to, uh, someone who actually came to a public forum, uh, days later stopped me as I was eating and he was like, how are you voting on, on, on fracking bill? And I said, you have forty-five minutes I want to talk to you about. And he was like, you're kidding me. And I sat him down in South District Mall and we talked for like almost an hour on this bill. So if you ever see me in the mall, South District Five people, I will talk about this stuff. So just come up to me, I'm pretty approachable, I promise. So that's it, just wanted to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hall. Thank you, President Katina. Uh, so we're gonna hear a lot of excuses tonight, right, from folks who are gonna vote no to mind what we did. Uh, we've had multiple meetings to introduce any proposed amendments, to bring up any of these concerns. But instead, you know, all of the concerns that have been brought forth, both by members of this council and from the administration, who you may have seen preemptively, put out a statement that they were going to veto this even before it was passed. So that was the first for me since I've been on council. Uh, but we've heard tons of excuses, right? Uh, we've heard, well, what about the businesses that people are enjoying? Well, there's an exception for that. We've heard, well, this will bind the hands of future councils and future executives. But no, it won't. We've already talked about that. How if future councils or future executives wanted to vote to fracking a park, they'd have to bring it right here and have to vote on it. We have heard that thanks to fracking in Deer Lakes Park, we have a splash park. And then in our last meeting, we saw pictures of that splash park from four years before they ever started drilling in Deer Lakes. Then we heard, well, this doesn't do anything anyway because it has a repealer clause. Well, guess what? The charter requires that every single bill that this body passes has a repealer clause. Every single excuse has been just that, an excuse, nothing else. And so instead of going back and forth and giving more excuses that have been refuted, more excuses that you've already been given opportunities to rectify in the language of the bill, more excuses to try to wiggle around the votes while saying, I support ban fracking in the parks, but I'm gonna vote no? Like, am I missing something here? Because if you don't support fracking in the parks, then you should vote yes to ban fracking in the parks. It just seems like that's the one that I'm struggling with. Uh, we don't need to get into all the harmful effects of fracking because again, we have been talking about this bill for months. We have heard all the experts, the people who are way smarter than any of us. We've heard all the research, all the data. We've had folks testify about their personal experiences. We've had doctors and scientists testify about their research. The one thing we haven't heard is anybody stand up in front of us and say, don't vote for this. Because I represent all of Allegheny County, so every single district that every single person is sitting up here representing, and I promise you, I've heard from folks in your district who want us to pass this bill, regardless of which district you're in. But what I haven't heard is any single person saying, please don't ban fracking in the parks. Not once. Not the seventy-plus folks that came to our public hearing, not the dozen of folks who came here tonight, not the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of folks who are in all of our email inboxes. Not one person has said, vote no on us. So why are we sitting up here even debating excuses for why you want to vote no? While saying I support the spirit of the bill, then vote yes. End of story. Easy. I'm gonna be voting yes, I hope everyone's gonna join me.
Councilwoman Markham.
Yeah, I have a client going now.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I, I think we can make the, the business case for almost anything and, um, you know, I know that because I teach in a business school. But just because there's a financial benefit to be realized, uh, from this endeavor in the parks doesn't mean that it should trump other considerations like attempting as best we can to protect the sanctity of these important community assets from commercial intrusion. I hold this seat, well, unfortunately, I, I came to this seat as a result of a person who was my predecessor, uh, who, who, who died, um, after her first term in office and she was seeking a second term. And she was someone who was deeply involved in the debate, the discussion with respect to fracking, hot dog factory in, in Allegheny County, named Barbara Deanie Dankin. And, um, she was a representative, I would say a leader, uh, of conscience and, and principle. And so, uh, in my vote to, to support this ban tonight, um, I offer a nod to her in some small way. And although she was a small person, she had very big shoes to fill, which I will probably not be able to fill. But I will be voting, uh, in support of the ban tonight and, uh, with a nod for a remembrance of Barbara Deanie Dankin.
I'm simply going to remind, uh, members of council, uh, Member Beckowski's comments earlier in the evening about not impugning the integrity. Come again, uh, I think it's important that we share our views and we can disagree, uh, without impugning the integrity of, of members' intentions. The choices that members make is the choices that members make, whether we agree or disagree. And I think that, uh, um, we need to be wary of that because it will come back to bite you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nakrati, challenge.
I have a question for our solicitor. The intent of this ordinance is certainly to ban the light and heavy industrial activity in the parks associated with the oil and gasoline. And as was mentioned earlier about the language and that speaks to commercial activity, would that apply purely to a for-profit entity versus a nonprofit entity?
I thought I read the language in there that was for pro- for profit and not profit. That's the way I read it. I didn't, I was not asked to look at that language. I was asked to look at repealer language and I gave a memo on that. But that was my initial reaction. They dealt with industrial, commercial, public.
And as it relates, where it talks about housing, there is, in my district at Voice Park, a facility on the park property that is a home for at-risk youth. And so because that's an existing agreement, I imagine at some point, I don't know how often it gets renewed, would that then be grandfathered through this ordinance?
You should put language, if you're gonna grandfather something, you should put it in that it is prospective, not retroactive. You should put specific language in for that.
Because I'm new to this council in the process, is it possible to offer an amendment this evening that's?
Yeah, it talks about existing leases though, doesn't it?
Yes, I'm just trying to answer a question.
Because I, I would vote, I'm voting, our cosponsor, I'm voting yes, obviously, for many reasons that I can speak to this evening about the intent behind this, but just for the concerns that folks had expressed and to make it absolutely clear that the intent is for this to prohibit that light and heavy industrial activity that could occur on or under county property, county parks.
I think what we were looking at was the last sentence of six eight, that we, it talks about applying any extension or amendment. So I don't know the existing leases that are on. Would that affect that housing if their lease expires at the end of this year?
Councilwoman Hall.
Yeah, so I will again point out, uh, section six eighty dash three, it says the provisions of section six eighty dash two shall not be read, interpreted or otherwise deemed to have any effect, not just upon any lease, but also any memorandum of understanding or any other contractual relationship relating to the use of county-owned property. We have been over this a million times. This does not affect any existing leases, contractual relationships or memorandums of understanding.
Only could the extent determine the fix.
Correct. And any contractual agreement that they have for renewals thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Nakrati.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much, President Katina. But the final sentence of six eighty dash three, the provision shall however, apply to any extension or amendment expanding the scope of an existing agreement and/or any new or successive agreement. So yes, anything that comes up, any leases that end, that expire, anything new, will and can be prohibited. And there's also housing in the, in North Park that is subject to your, the concerns of other council members, um, from Voice Park. So again, this bill, as worded, does not protect, in my opinion, in my reading, does not protect even existing agreements because someone could file suit. And if they wanted to, it would be up to the company and/or the county to defend. And we would be defending those suits with taxpayer money. So I am just suggesting that we, you have to take a further read. It's just not that simple.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Futulis.
Yeah, I would just say that we're doing a lot of debate here, talking about some of these things. You know, I would think that this thing should go back in the debate where it could be debated and debated there.
I'd like to call a question.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I just made a motion to call a question, wait a second.
On the motion to call the question, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Beckowski, yes. Mr. DiMarco.
Is this calling a question or?
Correct.
It's calling a question, just to end the debate. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Duer.
Yes.
Ms. Leaji.
No.
Mr. Futulis.
I will never vote yes to end the debate, no.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Should I change my vote to no?
It'll throw my count off, hold on.
Sorry.
Should never cease debate, no.
Hold on, give me, give me a second, can she not? Okay, Mr. Macy is a no?
Yes.
Thank you. I, 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 I. Ms. Nakrati, challenge.
Yes.
That's a no on the motion? That's a yes on the motion then.
I say yes.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzia.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina. I have to say that I don't think the debate's, I'm sorry. Eyes ten, nose five for motion passes.
All right. Motion has been made, seconded, debated, and settled, so call the question.
On the motion to approve the bill, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Beckowski, yes. Mr. DiMarco.
Uh, because both Marcela Shell, Polish, and Mr. Warren's submitted estimates, both were out of the fracking gap, and Councilmember Howell said no, give, it's false.
Mr. Duer.
Yes.
Ms. Leaji.
No.
Mr. Futulis.
No.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
No.
Ms. Nakrati, challenge.
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzia.
Yes.
Vote yes.
President Katina. Yes. Eyes eleven, nose four for the pass.
Woo! Okay, um, are there any liaison reports? See no liaison reports, we're going to do business ordinance and resolution one, two, three, five, four, dash, two, two.
An ordinance of the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Allegheny County Code of Ordinance, Division five, entitled Health and Sanitation, for recreation of a new chapter five, five, zero, entitled Right of Choice, sponsored by Councilmembers Duer, Bennett, Pritzia, Howell and Klein.
Health and Human Services, one, two, three, five, six, dash, two, two.
An ordinance of the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Allegheny County Code of Ordinance, Division two, entitled County Government Operations, to recreate in the new chapter two, nine, zero, entitled Law Enforcement Prioritization, sponsored by Councilmembers Duer, Bennett, Pritzia, Nakrati, Chavis, Allen and Klein.
Health and Human Services, one, two, three, five, seven, dash, two, two.
An ordinance of the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Allegheny County Code of Ordinance, Division six, entitled Parks and Recreation, to recreate in the new chapter six, eight, zero, entitled Certain Amendments Prohibited, in order to restrict the lease-in sale and/or any other agreements that would permit or otherwise facilitate private and/or public entities engaging in any minerals and other gas-extraction related activities within Allegheny County parks, sponsored by Councilmembers Futulis, Walton and Bennett.
Sustainability and Green initiatives, one, two, three, five, eight, dash, two, two.
A resolution of the county of Allegheny, amending the grants and special account budget for two thousand twenty-six, submission number zero, two, dash, two, two, sponsored by two, two.
And that will go to budget and finance. Any new business?
Uh, no.
Notification, contract?
Open up.
Public comments on general life.
We did have your individuals sign up, all submitted written comments, John Haynes, Brian Stelz, and Burke.
All right, uh, question, personal privilege, President Katina, uh, after this speaker goes, the previous speaker had to leave, let's submit written comments, I would just like to ask that those are read.
County council members and President Katina, friends that I do know on council, I'm going to speak about a park of a different nature than almost as important as the county parks. This is a